Oh yay.
So tempting, it's so straight and the hell even.
Okay Renee. Yeah, the mics are on. We're ready to go. I'm gonna call the meeting to order if we could all rise. We play allegiance. Flag is in a new spot. All say it together.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So first of all, I want to welcome our live audience and our in-person audience. This is our first meeting back all together. And as our attorney said, it's cozy. But before we go any further, I just want everyone to understand that we have a brand-new, just-installed, finalized last week, audio/video system in the meeting room. And Veronica, who is sitting down here, our webmaster, is operating it for the first time. So we have, we have tested it out over the weekend and got it to work properly. But it is our first off attempt, so please try and bear with us if there's any glitches. But this system will allow not just the town boards that we have, but the courts, any informational sessions we have, to both be able to be in-person and livestreamed and recorded with documentation if we want on one screen while the other screen shows the participants. So we're pretty excited about it, and today we just want to get through the meeting. So. Secondly, well, let's just, this has been a long time in coming getting back together, so let's just identify everybody here. And we could start with Nikki, identify yourselves.
Nikki Reed, town clerk.
Tom Purcell, highway superintendent.
Renee Rotundo, town supervisor.
And Christmas, board member.
Kiva Larkin, board member.
Judy McElhanan, board member.
Carl Dennis, board member.
And then sitting down here below us is our attorney for the town, Tim Freteski, and our accountant, bookkeeper, Tom Chartrand. As I said, Veronica, hoteling. And we also have a special guest today who's hiding off-camera, who will be announced in a moment. But before we do that, I would like to have a moment of silence for three town residents who passed away since our last board meeting. Dave Cook, who is well-known in the community for his car repair business in Amesville, longtime resident of Pompey. Mark Wasmond, who many of us knew personally, both here when he would substitute as the town attorney at McKenzie Hughes, but also as a wonderful contributor to the Fabius Pompey sports programs. My son was lucky enough to have him as an assistant coach on the basketball program. And then Helen McDermott, who passed away on May 26th, just recently. Her funeral was held. I also want to take this opportunity, since Memorial Day was just last week, also honor those who serve our country, both those presently serving, those in the past, and also those who actually lost their lives in service of our country. So if we could have a moment of silence. Thank you. Okay. So next on the agenda is our special guest, county legislator. David Knapp asked to be present here today because he has some news that he'd like to share with us, but he needs to get on camera.
So what do I need to?
So come up. Come right here. There you go.
They definitely see the good side of me.
And the only thing I would say is, you need, not for the people on Zoom, but actually for here, we need to speak up because.
Okay, yeah, well, I typically don't have a problem. So two things, just take a very quick minute here. So both good news. I've got a meeting tomorrow with our town attorney to put together our intermunicipal agreement for the $25,000 for the speed signs, digital speed signs, and I think irregular signs you were thinking about with, if there's somebody left over. So I should have word on that very, very, very quickly. We'll get that finalized.
Okay, and then we can order.
Yep, exactly.
Okay.
Yep. And then the other piece of very good news is, Oninokka County is one of the very few counties in the state that takes our mortgage tax money that we receive when people either refinance or buy a house, and we distribute it out to the towns and villages. And as we know, the real estate market's been doing pretty well. And so just last week, the legislature approved for Pompey $153,387.76. Your budget for the year is $140,000. So we're already $13,000 over, and we have another payment coming later in the year. So we're, obviously, we're, the market's not cooling down any, so that's gonna be, yeah, you'll definitely have some extra cushion there with everything else going on. It's nice to have a little, yeah, a little good news there. So. Obviously, Tom keeps very, very, very close track of this. But yeah, no, some very good news, so.
Thank you so much.
I'll get back to you on the.
We see the roadwork has started.
Yes, Route 20, as I promised.
As you promised.
It was not a conspiracy last year. They're gonna stop at the Pompeytown line. I told you we'd get done.
The county roads too.
Oh, absolutely, yes. We, I was gonna bring my, I'll save that for next meeting. We've got a very nice list of county roads, and Tom knows most of them, that we're paving this year. So it's gonna be a great year for.
I can't think that it's because I live on Pratt's Falls Road. It's more the.
Yeah.
But that road has already been completed. They put the lines down today, so.
As we said, we prioritize Pompey to make sure we get everything done well before the Empire Farm Day, so there's no traffic concern, and the town will be looking very, very nice. So, very good. I'm gonna stick around for the next segment on the agenda, though, real quick.
Okay, okay. So. Next thing on the agenda is our continuation of our, the public hearing on the solar overlay district local law. And we did get, and I think, and everybody has it, it's so much for my items. It's item number one, actually. It's the first item there. We did get a response, comments back from county planning, which basically amounted to ericitation of the provisions of our local law, and then deferring to the town to determine what to do with the local law, but noting that they did not deem the law to have any adverse effect on the town. Did I say that?
Yeah, we sent it to the county for them to determine whether or not there would be a county-wide impact for local law 2021-2 in this case. And, you know, if they had found issues with it, they would have let us know, but they have not found any issues with the overlay district local law. And so you're free to vote on this without, what would be a super, without a majority plus one vote that would be required if they had modifications that they had. But they're not asking.
Okay. I was expecting comments from our environmental conservation commission, but have not received them as of this moment. I did attend the meeting where they discussed the solar overlay local law, but I don't feel like it's my place to speak for them. They should speak for themselves. So I do know that they had different, they all had, they all brought out different issues. So they basically were going to share comments, but I don't know why we didn't get it. We just didn't. So we'll have to decide if we're good with proceeding without it. But I also have several comments that came in, both through my phone and through email, that I could save for the end of the public hearing, if that's the appropriate time to share them or not. I don't know if I just include them as part of the record, or do I read them into the record?
You're gonna include those as part of the record.
Okay, because some of them are from people that already spoke last time. So I don't know if we need to hear from them again, but I can share these with, I'll give them to Nikki. But I probably will mention the phone messages, because I don't have anything in writing. So, but with that said, do we need to reopen?
Somebody can make a motion to reopen.
I'll make a motion that we open the public hearing on local law number two.
I get it.
I think Sheila would be too, too, at this time, Carl. So all those in favor? Aye. Aye, opposed, motion carried. So the way we're going to structure this, because we are doing this hybrid version of both people here in person and also virtually, I can deal with anybody who's present who would like to speak, if there is anybody. And Veronica will monitor Zoom and Facebook to see if there are any comments there. The one thing I would ask is that, if people have already been heard at the previous public hearing on this last month, please allow other people to have an opportunity to be heard, if you'd like to hear from somebody new. Certainly are taking everyone's positions into account. And we would like to limit, at this point, comments to three minutes. Not that I have a watch, but that's what we thought would be fair at this point. So is there anyone, let's start with anyone here present, that would like an opportunity to be heard? Is there anyone present? So Veronica, I don't know.
There's nothing on Facebook at the moment.
Okay. And I don't see anything here on Zoom.
Very quick. Actually, kind of weighing two hats, both a property owner.
Just so you know that, because you're not in the scene, in this thing. There you are. Got a comment.
My brother and I own some property in Pompey, so just as a property owner and kind of, as kind of legislator. And maybe, Tim, you can answer this, because, and maybe we're a little bit premature here, the whole opt-out of the state pilot program thing, has the town taken any action on that yet?
No. And so there is a opportunity for the town, if it wants to opt out of the tax exemption that is automatically allowed for solar, for solar farms. I do not believe the town of Pompey has opted out of that tax exemption, so it exists. There will be a requirement, if anybody does construct a solar farm, that they enter into a pilot agreement either with the town or with the
Exactly.
County industrial development agency. So I do not believe that the town has opted out of that.
Yeah, I mean, that's something we can talk about once you've adopted the local law. But some of my other towns have opted out of it. Basically, Reader's Digest, make it really quick, the state passed a law basically saying, kind of passing a standard package.
For pilots.
For a pilot, if a solar company comes to Pompey and wants to put in something, if you opt out of that, basically it gives you the ability to kind of negotiate your own. And so, and with the IDA.
Yeah, so.
With the IDA's help.
So right now, as the state law exists.
I don't want to confuse this anymore.
As state law exists, these are wholly exempt from property taxes. Any solar farm that would be a tier-three solar farm would be exempt from property taxes. We have the right to negotiate a pilot, either the town does or Osida does, if, if, under that circumstance. If the town opted out of the exemption, then it would be taxed fully. You're fully.
Or you negotiate something.
Yeah, but you would have no responsibility to negotiate anything if you didn't, if you didn't opt out. My, my, I know that Manlius originally opted out, and within the last year and a half, they opted back into the exemption. And when they were opted out, there were, that did put a, put a little bit of a damper on actually developing solar farms, so.
When they opted out?
When they opted out, yeah. So Chris, I know Chris, he might know.
Yeah, it's just something to think about. Once we have this in place, it's something to think about. It doesn't have to happen at the same time or anything like that. There's advantages and disadvantages to each way of looking at it.
Chris.
I'd just like to point out that, I mean, if the town does opt out, that affects tier-one and tier-two solar as well. Ordinary residents of the town, who right now can do have a tax exemption for solar, if they install it on their property, they would lose that exemption as well, if the town opted out.
That's correct. If you're going to opt out, it's for all, that's for all solar, it's for all solar improvements, including residential.
Well, you can make your own policy, right?
You mean the town?
Case by case.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Also, I thought the underlying property was still taxable at its previous level. It's just the improvements to the property for the solar or wind or whatever's put on that property is exempt.
It's like a 485B type exemption.
So if it was farmland tax for $100, and today it's still farmland tax for $100.
But of course, when you're talking about a solar farm that's going to be on vacant land, the improvement is going to be significant versus what it would be on a residential house.
What's 485B?
That is a economic development exemption that's allowed for improvements on property in towns.
Okay.
Over 50%.
Pardon me?
Over 50% in the construction?
Yeah, right. I think it is 50% of the construction, and it's a sliding scale downward.
Correct.
It's over 10 years.
I use it in the city.
Yeah.
Chris, care comments that is correct. It is the additional value from the rooftop solar array that is subject to taxes. For a residential system, this can be $20,000 to $30,000 in additional assessed value. Hello. Sala says, "We are impressed with your initiative, so that those with agricultural land are informed to use their land for solar farms if they so choose." I think that's Florence Sala, and she lives in Pompeypines, just so we can identify people. Anything on Facebook? Nope. I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I make a motion to close the public hearing. The solar farms.
I get it.
Carl seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye. Opposed, motion carried. I will give these to Nikki, the comments I got in writing, and they can be part of the record that can be available for the public. There were a couple of phone messages. Four. Two with no name, six in total, but two with no, nobody identified themselves. Okay, left me a phone number, so they don't count. One person just called because they were complaining that they got late notice of the hearing, because the postcard came the day after last month's meeting, and the postcard did not come from the town. It came from somebody unidentified that had nothing to do with the town. So there were a few people that called complaining that they got late notice of the hearing, that we had already published, but a postcard went out, and that was confusing. So I did straighten it out with people that I could call back, but not everybody left a name and number. And then there were three other people that left their names and their addresses. Steven Para from Sweet Road called to oppose the solar. He lives near the cell towers, and he doesn't want a 400 to 500-acre solar farm, which is what he thinks was going to happen. Marilyn Ben, who lives on Route 91, opposed the solar farms as well because of her concerns about the views out here, the view shed. And then Mary Ann Wilson, who we heard from last month, but she had also sent, she also sent a letter, which I'll give to Nikki, but also called in favor of, she lives on Route 91, in favor of solar, the solar farms. So that's all I would have to share with you and what can include them.
Okay.
So now I think we need to decide as a board what we're ready, if we're ready to move forward on this and take a vote. I think that's our next step.
We did secret at the last meeting, so we did a secret analysis of the project, and it's reflected in the resolution that was prepared for your review tonight.
Anybody want to weigh in on their readiness? Well, I, yeah, I think, first of all, we've, this has been a lengthy process. Sheila herself has been involved from the very beginning because she was on the committee, so her knowledge is, is great. We have all become informed along this way, with lots of public hearings, allowing lots of varying viewpoints to weigh in. And we've actually revised the original solar, I call it the siting plan law, as a result of the comments that the public had. So I know I myself feel very prepared to proceed, but I don't want to speak for other board members. So I would like each of you to tell me if you feel ready to vote.
Think so. It's been going on a couple of years.
I'm ready.
Everybody ready? Okay, so we would need a motion.
Yeah, somebody wanted to make a motion to approve local law 2021-2 as presented to the town board.
I would make that motion. Second it. Judy seconded it. Any discussion? All those, well, actually, Nikki, could we do roll call for this one? Yeah, I think it's important.
Advisor Rotundo?
Yes, aye, yes.
Yes, yes.
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 Motion passed. I want to not only thank the town officials involved in this, but I do want to thank the public. There was a lot of very good discussions and comments that came out of this process, and I think we all benefited from it. I think the law is as protective as we can get, sort of a ban, and we can't ban, or we get in trouble with our state laws if we do. But I just want to also point out that there are two other towns. I think it's Clay.
Clay.
And Cas, Casanova, that want to pattern their law after the one, after ours. So that's really, I think, a testament to John Sheen, the work he's done and this committee's done, Sheila. And Tim, for your legal expertise, it's very appreciated. And I think we're gonna close the chapter on our solar overlay district law, and we will see what we get as far as a response to now having a law in place. So, anybody else want to comment?
I think you wrapped it up.
Okay, so what we said, all right. Just want to give you a chance. Like, no one can be a big mouth. So this file, I'll go back here now. So the next item up on our agenda is the swim program. Almost as difficult, maybe more so than the.
Thank you.
By Dave, than the solar. But let me, Tom Chartrand and Megan Campbell, our swim program coordinator, deserve so much credit for getting us to the point we're at, which is, we will be having a swim program this year, and we will be able to accommodate almost every single registrant in the program. We, we got 116, I believe, registrations. 56 of them.
So 56 from the town of Pompey, nine from the town of Lafayette, 15 from the town of Fabius, outside, Cas and Manlius, with a total of 13, or 15, I'm sorry. So 95 total is right now.
So what we, what we did was, that's really about half, less than half of what the typical registration would be. Not that I know it personally, because I can't.
About a third of the normal registration.
So the concern was, there's no way we should spread all of that out over two sessions. So we made the decision to limit it to one session. This is going to be the second session, the start of the second session, which I think is July 19th, that'll run for three weeks. And the focus was to make sure that all Pompey and Lafayette and Fabius kids, especially because we have intermunicipal agreements with those towns, could be included. Were able to do that. We found out that we can have 24 kids in the pool, 24 people in the pool.
Kids and aides that have.
So somebody on the pool deck didn't count, so that allowed us to expand the numbers that we could include. And Megan did an amazing job.
She must have a mind like a computer, because she played these games with it pretty nice.
The options, trying to make sure that we got as many kids in the program. We've got all six levels, plus personal safety and water safety included, so nobody is excluded. And the cutting it to one session, while it won't benefit, and I'm so sorry for those kids that want the employment, it won't benefit them, but on balance.
No employment.
It's better than no employment. Other towns are looking for lifeguards, so hopefully they can pick up other employment. But on balance, the ability to include the kids that we, that registered, reasons why they didn't, I think people were holding off, not sure what was gonna happen. Other people were concerned that if they only did levels four, five, and six, that their younger kids weren't gonna get swim lessons, and that was more important. So we had a lot of different reasons, but.
Ripped a lot of scenarios.
Getting 95 kids into the program is huge. I talked to Megan just before this meeting, and she really was a wizard. I don't know how she did it. There's eight kids in one family. She's got them all in the same time slot, different level. I mean, but it's very, very difficult to play with the registrations, especially when you're down to one session. But anyway, bottom line is, there might be a possibility that there are a few slots available. They look like they're closing fast, though, because she heard from some more people today in Pompey that are going to take the slots that she gave them. The one outstanding question is the fee. Out of towners are $75 a child, and that's established, and we're good with that. We have gone from soup to nuts on what to do with the Pompey registrations. From down, back at budget time, we were going to have a. Registrations from down back at budget time, we were going to have a. Forty thirty twenty, no more than a hundred dollars for a family. To a suggested fee when the new year rolled around to a consideration of forty dollars a child. Because we knew the numbers were going to be low and the program was going to cost the town and we weren't going to get the revenue. So that said, Tom put together. Some numbers.
The sheet looks like this up there.
It's I think number.
Should be number two.
Number two, the swim program, so he put together some numbers. And you, I would like you to speak to them if you would, because I don't want to.
So, so what I did was, at the top of the sheet starts off with staffing, so. We need a sip swim director and the agreed upon at budget was two thousand seven hundred for the year and I think. I don't think we want to cut that salary in half just because we're running a two week period, because I think she worked harder than if we've been working, running a regular period. Now, the pool director would have been two thousand dollars for the two periods, so I broke that one down to a thousand dollars. That's a person that's in the pool every day, making sure all the kids get to the right classes, all the teachers are teaching properly. And kind of like almost a second lifeguard. And then she wasn't able to find a separate WSI instructor, so we took that off of the mix and we're using more lifeguards. So we're going to have a total of six lifeguards and that would be five for the classes and one to sit in the chair. And then we're going to have four aides, which are people that are not lifeguard certified, but have come up through the program normally. And so taking the water safety aid class and someone's taking the water safety instructor classes. And she's pretty sure she's going to come up with all of those people. So that it basically almost cut our staffing in half, not quite because Megan was still a full shot. So the total number of students is ninety five and the pool, we're going to cut. That one would be cut down as well in half to approximately three thousand four fifty. So the raw course cost per student is a hundred and seventy nine dollars and fifty one cents.
That's with.
That's with, that's the raw cost of what it's costing us to run the program with ninety five kids in it for three weeks. And then the offsets are, the first scenario I ran was with the town residents not paying anything. Fabius and Lafayette paying seventy five, non-residents paying seventy five. And then just the number of students in the levels, there are sixty one town, thirty Lafayette and Fabius and four non-residents. We've had a slight change in that from when I did this yesterday, because some of the residents are now non-residents. Some of the residents work, so there'd be a little bit more money coming in than this for non-residents. And so the net cost, the net cost or the net revenue from that was two thousand five hundred. Cost to the town about fourteen thousand five hundred or the net cost about a hundred and fifty two dollars per student. Over and above what we're receiving. The second scenario down at the bottom, put it in at forty dollars per every town student, whether you have one kid or fifteen kids. You're paying forty dollars for each one of those kids to hit the program, so that's kind of one of the areas you guys have to make the decision on. And so the net cost on that dropped down to a hundred and twenty seven dollars roughly. It'll be slightly less than that just due to the mix of the Pompey versus not Pompey, but it's not a huge differential. So your big time decision is which way to go with charging Pompey residents.
And I'm just going to add two things, the not the number of stuff that I've learned. Megan said that except for a couple of families, all the families are willing to pay. But there are a couple of very large families and we did originally cap it at a hundred. There's one family that has eight and a couple of families with five. You know, so and they're all wanting to be in the program, so that's one. One thing I want you to consider, the other thing is. The. The possibility, the very good possibility that we could recover lost revenue from this program through the American Rescue. The the stimulus money. I talked to the county executive's office last week, she wanted to confirm it, but she thought that that would be. A appropriate use of the stimulus funds. So I just want you to have all of that as you think about how we handle the town residents, I mean. They're willing, the most of them are willing to pay.
It's about a twenty five hundred dollar differential.
What was our budget amount originally?
You mean like the whole budget beforehand?
We're like way under budget basically is what I'm getting at.
We're way under on revenues too.
I get it, but.
Yeah, so our original program was. Twenty four thousand roughly for the payroll, so we're down to about twelve thousand five hundred, so not. Quite half, but you know, right around there and then we had estimated contractual seven thousand nine hundred. And we're at about three, four, about four thousand, five thousand roughly on that. But our revenue, when we did the budget, that that's where the real differential is, we'd originally estimated. Sixteen thousand dollars coming in, but we're only going to have about two thousand five hundred. So that's where it's a loss of revenue due to the number of bodies hitting the water. That's why I presented it that way as a differential as opposed to versus budget.
Okay. I mean, the 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 good news is we can accommodate every single child that's registered for the swimming program. So the only real outstanding question is the charges for the Pompey. Children. If any. So thoughts, board members?
Within our budget though, could it, can't we compensate, like let's say we didn't do the charge this year, okay? Can't we compensate within the budget money that we have?
Oh, we're not going to spend all of our expenditures, so.
Right.
And but we're not bringing all our revenues, so there there's sort of semi-balancing, but the lack of revenues is greater than the savings on the spending side. That's why I'm hoping that the, I suggested to Renee to check and see if we could use those American Rescue funds.
Okay, which was a brilliant thought.
So in the ski industry, we take a family and we cap it. At a certain number of members in a family, because you don't want to just, you know. Lead them drive, right, and you want them to come back and enjoy it and be a part of it, so I would say capping it. Is the way to go.
With the original forty thirty five and thirty or whatever it was.
And if you have a certain number of people in a family, maybe we come up with the number in the families, let's say four. And if there's more than four in a family, give it to them.
Well, I think that if we did the forty dollars for the first child, thirty for the second.
Right.
Twenty for the third, if you have more than three children, it's capped at a hundred, so the hundred dollars, the fourth child would be ten dollars. Essentially, or the fourth through eighth, however many extra children would be free. You know, it would be, you wouldn't get charged something for that, so because the thing that was really impressive was how. Many people were willing to pay, just willing to pay and I I think that that should be recognized.
Yeah, yeah, well, they want their children to be part of something.
So, but I, but we do have at least three off the top of my head, maybe four families with a lot of kids.
I think there would only be like three families that it actually affected, but we have, you know, we have some other families with three people, they're going to be close to the hundred.
Yeah. So I mean, my hope is that we could recover our losses through the stimulus funds, which we're, which we're supposed to see this year. But the first half of it. So.
Hopefully we'll see it before we have to do the first report.
We keep waiting.
There's even any guidance from the state that on how to account for it, so. So I I think probably at this point, it would just be a motion of the board to use the original. Fees that if the organizational meeting kept at a hundred per family. And then, you know, this sheet, it's only going to make a few dollars difference really in the big picture of things.
Carl made the motion and Judy seconded, any discussion? I would just say I think it's fair, this year we'll revisit it at budget time, obviously COVID has. Affected a lot of things. Anybody else? All those in favor? Hi, opposed, motion carried.
And you're going to let Megan know, because now she's got to make more phone calls.
Got to make phone calls to the Pompey people. So, but I really cannot thank you, Tom or Megan enough, this was really difficult. Figure out. So now we're on to the bookkeepers.
So on the monthly report, the receipts, the last, I think I gave you as a. Last separate page, so town clerk fees came in great last month, three thousand seven hundred and thirty one dollars. Bank class interest is creeping up just slightly, so we're still at like less, we're like, I think it was at point. Zero four two or something at the end of the month last month. Court fines still coming in pretty slow. Tom emptied out all the scrap metal, two, almost two thousand five hundred dollars of scrap metal, so. Hit the market just right, so that's, most of that is in excess of what we had budgeted for, because we didn't really have a number for what. Out there. Little refund from Eastern Shores, I think that was because we sold the truck, which is the next item there. Sale of the pickup truck, we got seven thousand five hundred, that wasn't quite all that we had budgeted for sale of equipment, so. Do we have something else for selling this year? Did the truck come in lower than we thought?
Truck came in lower than we thought, that was just an estimate, you and I came up with a bunch of time and. The the auctioneers, they thought they'd be, you know, we were looking for ten grand, they thought it'd be no problem, but obviously it was. It's the auction numbers were low this year and. Renee just said COVID's really got things messed up.
So that was the story on there, when I wasn't positive on that, but I wanted to explain that one. So on the expense side, it was actually a very quiet month, nothing really jumped out at me as being exciting or to really tell you anything about, so. As far as the big picture stuff. General spending without the Sats district is at forty percent, so worth, you know, five twelfths of the way through the year, so we're under. What we would expect, revenue for general fund is at eighty five percent. Highway spending is at twenty four percent, but as you saw with vouchers tonight, that's going to kick up a little, because Tom put some stuff on the roads and bought it. Bought a new vehicle and the revenues in the highway fund are at eighty eight percent, so we're looking quite good there. So, great news there. And let's see, bank reconciliations, I think all floated around and looked like everybody had signed off on them.
I'll make a motion, we accept the bank reconciliations of the supervisor and town clerk.
Anne made the motion, Judy seconded, any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, motion carried.
So payment of the bills is the next item after bank reconciliation, it looks like everybody signed them, so we just need a motion to move on with pay.
I'll make the motion, we paid the bills.
So Anne beat out Carl, it's amazing for the motion and Sheila seconded it. Any discussion? All those in favor? Hi, opposed, motion carried.
That's because Veronica hit Carl in high speed on the. And I gave you a transfer sheet tonight and this is kind of a good thing to be transferring, these are all surplus funds that we've received. At the top there, we received six thousand four hundred from the J cap grants, that's going to cover most of the AV equipment. And also we've got to get a, and also authorized for a fire alarm upgrade, which we got to get that. I think we've already approved that, so we got to get a fire, our fire alarm guy to push the button and get that fire alarm in. And then we talked about it last month, we got the seven thousand two hundred from the perma refund from the audit of our previous workers comp. So that was good and Renee was able to secure, secure us a five thousand dollar grant from the community. I don't know the exact.
It's the CNY Community Foundation.
Foundation, and so that was five thousand dollars towards the schoolhouse floor repairs. So we're going to move the money into the justice court for. Six thousand four hundred for the new equipment, central communication system, we're going to use part of the perma money for that. Because we have been using a lot of IT money for this kind of stuff and getting everything tied into it. And then the historical property, the four thousand eight hundred, the balance of that perma money. And five thousand from that new grant to bring us up to the seventeen thousand. Or just under seventeen thousand that we need to do the school house upgrade. And so if we approve these transfers, we're good to go on all these projects.
Make the motion, we approve the following transfers that were just read up.
And I would second it, any discussion? All those in favor? Oppose, motion carried. That is a feel good motion.
Yeah, it really is when those are all grants and stuff and surprises.
Not taxpayer dollars.
Yeah, that's one. I think that's all I had at this point.
Okay, thanks for all your help this month, Tom.
Nikki, yes, courts report. Yes, if the board has had the chance to review the May third, twenty twenty one regular meeting minutes, I'm looking for a motion to accept those.
So move, we accept the minutes of.
Carl made the motion and seconded it, any discussion, everybody get a chance to read them, all those in favor? Hi, opposed, motion carried.
Second, town clerk's office is operating under some adjusted hours. We're open Monday through Thursday from eight thirty AM to four o'clock PM and we'll be closing every day from twelve PM to one PM. Just trying to save money on the budget, I've cut Debbie's hours way back, so I'm primarily there by myself and. I just need time to be able to run to the bank and make my daily cash runs, I hate putting a post it up saying, I'll be back in twenty minutes, so. It just gives me time to do my legal notices, if I have to post any plays, I have to make a bank run, if I have to make a post office run, it's just. A set time, I want everyone to know every day that I'm just, you know, it's going to be closed up during that period of time.
And then Saturdays, what?
I'm holding off on Saturdays, I've been open Saturday since January of twenty twenty. And during tax season, I'll go back to being open during. Probably all of January and halfway through February, but other than that, I mean, I was here from eight forty five until noon. The phone never rang, nobody came in, so I'm going to cut those for now.
Yeah, I I mean, I've noticed the same thing, there's not, there's just no. And even if you do the night hours, there was nobody here at night and that's, I I'm just not real comfortable having. You you or your clerk, you're alone at night, just so you can have hours after hours, so. Unless we get any complaints and people have other. Let's, you know, concerns, I I think it makes sense.
Oh, and I've said it before and I'm still willing to do it, if anyone needs an appointment after hours or on a Saturday, I'm always willing to come in. You know, I did a wedding ceremony three weeks ago on a Saturday, I have no problem, I just, I'm willing, you know, to come in, but. Set hours, I'm not going to have evening at this time.
And when you know there's a reason to be here.
Right.
On a Saturday.
Right, so. Other than that, that's all I had.
Tom, Crystal, I never know what you have.
The town hall septic line plugged up last month and we ended up, Gary Terpster, get in here and router route it, had tree roots and grown in it and clogged it. While we were doing an investigation, we uncovered a highway septic tank and that's a, an old power best tank and it was actually collapsed. So we had both the town hall septic tank and ours cleaned out and we replaced the highway one with a new concrete thousand gallon septic tank. Plus a lot of the plumbing.
And I saw it. I saw the collapsed. Tank, so.
And we also been busy, has anybody been driving to Tom Rosebun, we've been doing bar patching, it's also bar slash crack ceiling, we do that every spring. And we also been busy, has anybody been driving the Tom Rose bomb, we've been doing bar patching, it's also bar slash crack ceiling, we do that every spring. This really paid off, it's been, we've been doing it for over thirty years and it pays in the long run. And now we're out sweeping up the excess stones for that, so if you got any loose stones on your road, they're being swept up. We started roadside mowing, or what we call our first cutting, last week, and that'll be doing that every day right along. And as Tom said earlier, a new pickup has arrived, we got the new Dodge, or I can't say Dodge, it's just called the Ram now, so that's, we have that. As far as some paving projects, we are gonna be paving with Hot Mixes Spruce Ridge subdivision, we pave this year. And we also, every year, we approximately do ten miles of resurfacing, and we still got a couple paving projects, short ones up in the air. We are getting a little bit more money from Cheshire, of course, the cost of stone and asphalt, everything's gone up, so let's show playing with the numbers on for future paving projects, those are on the books, so. And that's all I have.
Anybody got any questions? Good job. Thanks as always.
You're welcome.
Thanks for the job. Tim?
Yes.
How are you? Relatively silent, this is important, I know. So I think we just need to sort of parse out the cannabis legislation and figure out where we're gonna go, how we're gonna.
I can give you a brief overview of what law if we do nothing, in other words, no laws, we just let things go. The way state statute reads January first, twenty twenty two, the state would be able to license dispensaries and onsite consumption facilities in the town of Pompey. There's a question as to whether or not we would you would allow businesses in any zoning district, it's prob, it would still be considered a business in my opinion, and therefore would would only be allowed in business commercial districts. But we have the right to pass a local law to restrict which districts those types of facilities could be in. The two types of facilities, we are, we have control over would be, again, dispensing of marijuana and onsite consumption facilities, like wildly, cigar bars type facility. We do not have any control over people's right to use cannabis in their own homes, or to even grow cannabis at their homes. Those are penal law statutes that are amended by the state legislature, which no longer makes the criminal activity. You have the right to say you don't want dispensaries or onsite consumption in the town of Pompey. And you'd have to pass a local law to do that by the end of this year. You can say, we don't want dispensaries. We'll allow onsite consumption, or we don't want onsite consumption, but we'll allow dispensaries, or we don't want either of them. Once you make the deci, if you make the decision to to, to restrict those or prohibit those in the town of Pompey, then that would be subject to what's called permissive referendum, where somebody in the town can collect signatures. Have ten percent of the last gubernatorial election, if they were able to collect enough signatures to say that they want to override that law to opt out. And we're speaking in negatives a lot with this, with this legislation, so it gets a little confusing, but if somebody said town of Pompey, I don't want you to opt out, we want you to have all of these, I'm gonna go out and collect signatures, and if I get signatures of ten percent of the people who voted in the last gubernatorial election, then it would go up referendum to the people of the town of Pompey to either void that local law or allow a local law to stay in place. You don't have the option like villages do, just putting it on the ballot. That's not an option for towns, it's an option for villages. So the only way the people would be able to vote on that would be as if, if somebody did collect those signatures. If you do opt out, you would be able to opt back in, in the future if you wanted to. But if you don't opt out by the end of this year, you've lost your opportunity for here on into eternity, so.
Or we would be stuck with both onsite. And I don't mean literally, I just mean if we ever.
You could never, you can't.
Change it.
Yeah, once, once the option is provided to people to, and it makes sense, right? If you're saying, okay, we're gonna let you have it, then you can't turn around next year and say, no, no, you can't be in business anymore, so the state legislature won't allow you to do that. So th- this board is faced with a decision as to what, what, if anything, you wanna do. I think at the very least, we should consider a local law to determine what makes the most sense, where the sale and where onsite consumption makes the most sense in the town, if we're going to not opt out. So those are the kinds of questions that all the towns are asking. And then we have a couple of months to make those decisions. The revenues, of course, if you opt out and don't allow or you prohibit those onsite consumption or distribution, you would not be eligible for the tax revenue. That's a being applied to the sale of marijuana. Four percent.
Yeah, but I don't think the town gets all of that.
No, they get seventy five percent of the four percent, and if you have villages, you get.
The villages give us certain.
The county gets the one percent.
The county, the county, yeah, the county.
You don't have. Depending on the sales and the jurisdiction, so it'd be depending on our sales.
Correct, yes, you could only get revenue for sales that take place in the town of Pompey. But I'm not that side of the law, I'm not, I don't know as much about the revenue side.
Yeah, there isn't, you have no idea, you're, because it's, if nobody decides to open up here, we don't get any revenue anyways.
But then you don't have to deal with the issue of people.
Right.
Your town.
And I don't think the dispensaries are the ones, I think that are licensed, are licensed to get more revenue than the, the consumption places.
Yeah.
Does anybody have any questions for me about that?
One of the other things that one of my other towns talked about was the fact that if you do this and it goes to permissive referendum, and you don't have it in time to get it on the November election, then you have to, the town will have to pay for a special you'll have to pay for the.
For the end of the year?
No, it does not have to be.
No.
You can, if the permissive referendum is, if you pass the law in the second first meeting of December, somebody within forty five days, I think it is, there's, permissive referendum is very confusing, because there's permissive referendum in town law, and that's not applicable in this case, it's the permissive referendum in the municipal home rule law that applies, which is forty five days. That you get to, to get those signatures, so if you get your signatures from December first till January fifteenth, and you get your ten percent, then you'd have to hold a special election sometime in the spring, and.
But if you did, if you passed the local law in August or September, and the permits, and they filed against you, you might be able to get it on the November ballot and save you know, thousands of dollars in the cost of having a county bring out the machines and provide the election inspectors.
So the only way there would be the opportunity for permissive referendum is if we opt out, if we didn't, and that's not a reason, I've not opt out, to not have to deal with that, but so it would only be if we said we don't want in, in onsite consumption and we don't dispensaries or one of.
Either or.
Either or. Then the public, somebody could get a petition going and come up with the ten percent, and then force the issue onto a ballot for the, okay. So I have another question, but I can't think of it right now. Questions? What are other towns thinking? I'm just curious, because you do, other towns, you do other towns, I'm just wondering where they're at with it, like I heard some towns are waiting to see what other towns are doing.
My most rural town said, you know what, nobody's gonna drive all the way out here to buy it consume it, so we're not gonna go through the effort, but the towns that are closer to Syracuse are definitely in the same thought process you are, should we do it, shouldn't we do it, and some are leaning towards it.
Well, I would think the likely location that anybody would be interested in is gonna be in the hamlets. As far as either onsite consumption or are these, I mean, the dispensaries are state licensed.
Correct.
So it's not a head shop, we're not running around sell, selling drug paraphernalia, we're selling very controlled.
They might be able to sell paraphernalia.
Oh, they might?
Yeah, that hasn't been decided yet.
I think they should put this on the website.
I was, I was thinking about that, too.
Um, this is extremely informational.
Right, the Association of Towns did a great job on this town, the town officials' guide to this cannabis legislation, it's really, really, it's very clear.
That would be helpful.
Not that you weren't clear, Tim, you were.
I think we should go into the hamlets and ask for the people and just see what their thoughts are, where it might be.
As far as plan of action, I did reach out, I was thinking in terms of that possibility, I was thinking, we should definitely Delphi Falls, definitely Pompey Hill, and either or both here in this area at town hall or, and or over in Oran, up near Manly's area, as, as locations. I spoke, I've got a call into the Oran church, because I don't really know other places out in that area that would accommodate a public meeting. I also spoke with Pompey Hill Fire Department, we're good to go there whenever we want, except for I think, whatever night they hold on Tuesdays, they have they have meetings. The Delphi Falls Fire Department, they're just, they gotta reach out to their treasurer who worries about liability issues and just wanted to confirm wh- whether or not they would feel comfortable holding an informational session there. And then the town hall is a location, so there's four locations we could have it, we could do four informational sessions, if we did it here, we could also video record, you know, if we did one of the sessions here, we could video record, so we could put question and answer session, the website for people to be able to learn as well as this.
Do you think it's necessary to do four different?
Not really, but, and this is really not a hamlet here, I mean, in the, in the sense of like, but I, it's a lot. One?
But maybe we should get some posters and billboards down in the hamlets.
Yeah.
Something like some stand-ups or something.
Those are the two places, mostly Pompey Hill.
Yeah.
Either or, but not four, how about?
No, I'm just, I just, I didn't say we had to four sessions, I was just coming up with locations we could possibly use, so I'm open to whatever you guys are.
Well, I had asked you last meeting if we could put it out to people to vote, I think it's very important that we get some input.
I absolutely do.
Yeah, so maybe we do two informational sessions and try to figure it out.
So there's no requirement to have any kind of public hearings on this issue, and there would be if we pass a local law, of course, you would have to have a public hearing of a local law. But, so there's no you have to do this, like you would a special meeting, and that's all you would be required to do. You're gonna hold if you hold one at town hall through the through Zoom and through through Facebook, I, I think that that could serve, that, that's gonna hit more people probably, because they'll be able to watch it virtually.
This is one of those things where I think, and I, I could be completely wrong, but my suspicion is that more people are aware of this than most state laws that get passed, the, the state has passed this cannabis legislation, they don't necessarily know if they know what it all involves, but I think people are aware, so like, it might be more of a interest, you know, from people. And we could do, I mean, we could do just one here and see what that generates, maybe do it, have that be the first effort, and let's just see what, what the turnout is, what the interest is, and, and then decide to go from there. What I don't wanna have happen is what Tom is talking about, which is we get too late into the game, and then we gotta try and figure out how to, if, if somebody actually, if we decided to opt out of these these two areas that we actually have any say in, because most of the cannabis legislation doesn't allow towns to have any say, but if we do opt out, then it would have to be people that want us to have dispensaries and want onsite consumption locations that would have to get some petitions together, so it's a very, it almost seems backwards, the way you have to do it.
So do we wanna pick a date while we're all here? July, late July, I don't know.
Late July, I think that's too late, I think we need to do something in June.
Rather than later, I think.
Why don't, you can do it in your, oh, you wanna do it in June? You can do it at your next meeting, you can, do you want, you can devote a meeting to this, if there's not a lot on the agenda.
That's a great idea.
Okay, let's, and so then we'll have a month to promote it, to really try and get the word out that we're we want, we really want public input, I have no sense of what the Pompey community wants, I have no sense, I don't know which way people are, you know, I don't know if anybody else feels like their opportunity, I don't think so. Yeah, so not comfortable. I don't wanna make a decision without hearing from some people.
The only problem is your July seventh meeting is not a normal meeting night, so that may throw some people off.
Well, we're not doing it on the normal meeting night.
Right, I know.
Well, we can all do our due diligence and get it out there, I think, yeah, doing that right now, you know, I mean, we do the best we can.
And if we make it an odd night, it's probably even less likely that people will pay attention, we just need to, we'll put some things out, we'll keep we'll put some things out on Facebook and our social media.
If you're gonna do it in July, your, your meeting would have been the first of
Would have been the first.
Would have been the fourth, and it's not, so it's gotta be your regular town board, this was, was it, was that in the organizational meeting? It was all the organizational meeting.
That and Labor Day.
It was supposed to be July. Seven, so.
So you're thinking next board meeting, put it on, make it the agenda item. We'll just do the, it'll be, make it the first or biggest, the most thing in world.
Well, maybe put this out on the website, as I suggested, and then put the date of when our information meeting will be, Veronica could, you know.
Maybe, I was thinking Nancy Abbott, maybe make us up to some little placard signs, you know.
Put them around.
A dozen of them to put around at the, the corners, I think that would be with our procurement policy.
I know people have differing opinions about it, but I, part of the money that Dave Knapp is providing for the digital readers, I asked him if we had money left over, if we could get some sort of a board for out here where we could post, you know, public, public meeting on cannabis or, you know, planning board meeting this week, this Monday, you know, so, so I think.
An electronic one?
Well, I wouldn't mind electronic one, I think some people don't like electronic, they, but I just for easy, you know, just people passing by, I just think it's yeah, I know, I, I, I was surprised when somebody said that, I thought, well, everybody's got their own opinion about things, but.
They're around five grand.
Oh, they're, well, you can get them for five grand, they're up to twenty five grand. It depends on the size.
Depends on what you're getting, low ball, you could get one for five grand.
Well, and I think depending on the digital readers, we have with twenty five thousand dollars, what, from the county, we're gonna be able to, we probably, because I think we already did the numbers on this. We're just waiting for that intermunicipal agreement to be able to order, and then we'll know for certain what the numbers are. So hopefully, I think we have the money, but I, that way we could advertise.
Yeah.
And not that everybody goes, rides on, drives down Route twenty, but it's it is, yeah.
We, we need to remember that we did deny replacing the sign up in the center of Pompey Hill there that we owned with an electronic sign a few years ago, so that may come back and want an electric sign up there. If we pull one here.
Different administration.
Yep, I'm just telling you that there was a big push for that a few years ago.
Well, yeah, and, you know, quite honestly, that's a hamlet, it's a like hamlet environment, there's a character there, so I could see where that, but we'll see if they come back, do we still come back, but thank you for giving us, giving me a heads up. I don't know about you guys, I didn't know that. Yeah, okay.
Anne knows it.
So I will post, I will give this to. So I will post, I will give this to Veronica, the the guide, Association of Towns guide um, to put on on the website. Um, oh, you know what, before I forget, and this is completely off topic, but I just. I would love to get a sustainability or, and you know, some sort of environment like. Page on somewhere we can put all kinds of things.
I could talk to John about that. Um. He wasn't sure we had everything that.
Okay.
Up there yet.
Okay, I just.
So we're gonna.
Okay.
But I can, I can talk to him again about it.
Good.
So the MS four, um. The engineer of the town has a, has put together an MS four report. That's just a report on the activities to. Make sure we're complying with um, the stormwater standards that are required by the state. Thank everybody for the copy of that report or.
Well, I made one copy because it's so lengthy for everyone here to review and it's been.
It's a, it's it's an annual thing that we're supposed to do. Uh, engineers provide it, so.
Yeah.
You just need a motion to adopt that report.
I'll make a motion to adopt the MS four report.
Carl, oh, Sheila made a motion, Carl seconded it. Uh, any discussion? All those in favor? I opposed. Motion carried.
Then Nikki just have to put that notice on the website. Public review.
That's okay. You can have it.
And then the last thing on uh, under me is the designation of the Stormwater Management Officer. I I don't know if his town board has already designated somebody as Stormwater Management Officer, but. Our code requires somebody to be um, designated as a Stormwater Management Officer, came up because we're dealing with an issue. Um, with uh, some, some.
Is he the, is that the person that goes to meetings and everything?
Goes.
No, that's different.
That's a different.
No, this, they would be, they would be making sure, and it's usually the code enforcement officer for the town, the town engineer will make sure that. The SWIPS from a site, the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plans that have been approved with site plans are being followed. That all the MS four guidelines are being followed, that the stormwater code that we have adopted in this town are being followed, so. Um, we have a situation now where we have to get a letter out to some. To um, uh, to, to make sure that they're following those regulations. And I don't know whether somebody's been designated yet, but we're supposed to do that, so I thought tonight we should designate uh, the Code Enforcement Officer of Town. To be our Stormwater Management Officer.
I'll make that motion. Have a second, oh, Carl seconded it.
It's in the report, isn't it? Isn't that title on the report?
In here?
I believe so.
He used to be, the code officer in the past.
Yeah.
Used to sit in meetings. I mean, DC had come out before and I had to sit in with a meeting in Merka Parish.
That might be. It it's, I mean, if we just adopted that, did we just, just we just, did that just designate Bob?
Or designate you? Yeah, I don't know. The Code Enforcement Officer, yes, this, this is probably it, but let's just finish the motion and that, we know what it is.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? I opposed, motion carried.
Sorry, Beth.
Bob, you got anything to report? And you need to sort of come up here because nobody can see you.
Um, we do have things going on, um, the Route twenty bar. Sorry.
Keep coming. There you are.
Um, Route twenty barn, there's action on that, that'll be coming down. Um, I'm waiting for him to. Apply for the applicant uh, demo permit on that. So we are getting that taken down.
The one right here.
Scheduled in the near future?
Yes.
Four weeks?
He's in the process of pricing, pricing up. The owner lives in California.
Right, right.
So it takes a little time to get the back and forth posters and management company involved.
Empire man.
But they are in the process of getting that cleaned up and.
Right, right, if somebody gets hurt.
Um, Cherry Street property that's being worked on now, it's slow but sure, but. You know, the owner is taking care of that. He's there tonight working on it. Um, I don't know how much longer I give him. I, I think we're gonna give him, you know, I'd like to give at least another one more month after that. We have to put, I think we have to do something.
Did, what did you, you sent him a letter?
Yes. I gave him till May twentieth to.
Okay.
To ever clean up. May twentieth.
Okay, so I, so you're just giving him longer.
Yes.
Cause he's making some effort.
He's making pro, he's, he is making an effort there. Now, if I'm told different, then we will.
Yeah, you know. Uh, that's a tough situation because I think he means well, but I I've watched. The previous administration and the previous board. Addressed the same concerns with him that weren't as severe as they are now and got the same. You know, he, he did just enough to avoid having the, the place condemned, but.
It's ready to be condemned.
I know.
If that's the stuff you wanna take, take that.
We'll see. I mean, if you wanna give him time, that's fine. I, it's, it's a tough situation. As I said, I don't think he, I think he wants to, but I don't necessarily know. If he's capable of getting that place, of making that place safe.
Have you spoken with him in regards to whether or not he wants to keep the property?
He would like to keep the property, but he doesn't have the money to do the work on it, to bring it back.
Right.
He's trying to make it a historical landmark and it didn't work.
And that's what Carl and Sheila, you guys went through that before with him.
We gave him ample time and kept working on it. Other than a roof and whatnot, we never had results.
He never did anything else, right? It's up to the board. You tell me what you want me to do.
What's the lots?
We set a date and.
He owns three parcels there, isn't it? Three or two parcels?
There's three parcels, but we're only talking about one.
Give him as much time as possible.
The neighbors are complaining up there.
Right.
Okay. I'll send him a notice, I'll set a date. Um, we'll do that. Um, I've got another one of the vacant house on Cas Road, it's causing problems with the neighbors behind. Um, so I'm gonna go, I've already been by that one, and it's a vacant house that trash cars and everything around it. So I'll do it, I'm.
Where in Cas?
I've got the address.
Oh, okay, you haven't been out there.
I drove by the other day and I don't remember exactly the address. And the Pompey Center Road uh, project. It's been a project, Tim's been doing a great job with it. Uh, we are making progress there. They are being evicted or they have been evicted. Um, they, they go back to court. Second, third, Tuesday, yeah. So hopefully, we're gonna get that cleaned up and resolved.
What about the one on my road, Orange County?
We'll get after that one, too.
Okay.
You know, I keep telling you, I'm gonna get that one, too.
That's okay, Bob, you're so good, man.
So.
Appreciate it.
All right, I will get that taken.
All right. Thanks, Bob.
Thank you.
Okay, Ian, now council reports.
Couple weeks ago, Renee and I met two different times and went through uh, Judge Ammons books. Which he does a good job, and then I think two days later we came and went through Judge Tagnetti's. And we didn't see any problems at all. I will make a motion that we accept the checklist that we did.
I think it's a motion that the board has conducted an audit of the.
I will say that.
And you've seconded it, seconded it, Judy. Um, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed, motion carried.
And then I think Nikki needs to send a certified um.
But I might as well give you these. Ian and I signed, but I. And the second thing is that I have been working with Stan Gorman and the cell towers and Sevier Road. Uh, Tim sent us a list of and a copy of the letter he sent to everybody and I have emailed some of them, placed phone calls. I've heard from one company and they were gonna fill out the form. So I will just keep plugging away, keeping after them until we get something.
Thanks, Ian. Carl, you wanna talk about the schoolhouse?
Yes, we uh, we awarded the contract two months ago to HK General Contracting of Hager. And sixteen thousand eight hundred, and now we, I thank you for getting the grant so we can complete this and I call him up and find the. Go to work on it. When he fits it in.
Okay, and we've already moved the money.
We did it tonight.
Yeah, we were, we were quite short before we got the grant. Uh, we were still short. Even with the grant, but when that perma money came in, that helped. We took some of that and moved it to the schoolhouse. So there's significant money there now, enough to cover it. So um, do you want me to connect with him or how do you wanna handle it?
I'll connect him.
Okay.
I'll give him the good words around.
Okay, good. Thanks for your help on that, Carl. Um, Sheila.
I just wanted to let everyone know that I had some reading time last week, which was very nice, and uh, I'm working on the social media policy. I'm getting there. I said a long time ago I was gonna do it, and winter got away from me and I'm back on track. So I just wanted to let everyone.
I found an example of one that's really good, I'll send to you.
Please, I have about six of them that I sort of picked away at and tried to find.
And this one's really simple.
Yes.
And it's a good time now that we have everything installed to really put the plan together, so.
Maybe we can work on that together. That'd be great.
And um, Sheila also offered to help with the newsletter.
Yes.
So. The work in progress just never gets completed. I know, it's just, it's like the, I'm gonna get to it and then I just can't get to it, so. Um, okay, my report, old business. Um, y'all got um, a proposal from Arcadis. For doing basically the um. The uh, the spec and bid work for the preserve. And. I don't know if anybody had a chance to review it entirely. I I wasn't aware that there was a third area. Uh, Sheila, I know you walked that property with me. Um, that's the one question I have, and I know you got some. Unfortunately, the, the color map and here, I'm gonna share with you guys. It's easier to see the.
Oh, no.
Oh, you have yours. Mine didn't come out in color, so I didn't, but. So anyway, it's easier to see the areas involved, and I just don't remember when we did the walkthrough that there was a third area, but. It's showing on here, so I don't know if we're, I really don't want to sit on this because the, the preserve wants us to move forward.
Yeah.
So, um, I don't know.
Have they seen this? I take it you sent this to them?
Not to the preserve, no, no. Um, they're, you know. But the um, people involved in the homeowners association definitely want this work to be done.
Okay.
So, um, and they want to have a, I I said, I'm not sure how much of it is going to be done this year. Part of the problem is that Steve, they need to have, they need to have the survey done to determine the right grade level, whatever. Um, but they also, the homeowners association wants to have the more expensive. Option done, which is to put the pipe underground and have it be grass. And since it's a special district and they're essentially paying for it, um, I don't have a problem. Um, doing what, trying to do what they want. But um, it's just a matter of how we can schedule it, get the work done, how much can get done this year if. If, and then what if there's some leftover, you know, maybe we space it out over a couple years, I don't know, but um. This is part of the cost.
Right.
And this is in addition to. So, um, this is the RFP that. He put together, remember, that we, we, we wanted to see what it's, like what neighborhood. This project would come in at as far as cost, and it's quite expensive. So, um. I think what we need to decide is do we want. To sign this letter of proposal and move forward with the project, get the bid worked on, get the, the survey. Um, I forget what kind of survey it's called.
Brand topographical survey.
Topographical survey done, so um. Can keep this moving.
I think we should.
Yeah.
I do, too.
Got about fifty-one thousand left in that account right now.
Yeah. Which is going to, we have the money, but that's gonna eat up a good chunk of it. And the only thought I had. And I don't really wanna mention it in the sense that it might delay the process. Is if county purchasing could do the bid work, you know, if, if, which would save us because they don't charge us. But.
It's like they have a survey in order to.
Right, no, there's some of the work that would still need to be done. So the survey is about ten grand of the. Expenses here, I think. And then the final, I mean, the cheapest, the cheapest, the, the lot, least costly item here is the bid process, which is. Four grand, that's thirty-one thousand dollar bill.
The only way to keep it going.
Unfortunately, we're gonna be at the point where we have no money to do the work when we're done with the engineering.
Well, that's what we're, we need to think about bonding because they want, they would prefer that we do that and then build up. Charge them through their special district to get the work done than um, wait.
If they want it, then that's what we need to do. So I feel like the only way to move forward is to do it.
When we hit the binding cost, then would it, that'll probably balance what's left in that account at this point.
And then we're gonna.
Binding for all of the work to be done, probably.
And they'll pay for it, right?
Somebody's gotta pay for it. It's gonna be the district that has to.
Right.
It will be bonded out over how many years?
Twenty, probably.
Probably could go twenty, yeah. I mean, I don't know, it didn't last twenty years last time, so I'm not, that would be something that Bound, Bound Council would give us a recommendation of. It's, it's the expected life, so.
Okay, well, it's gonna be, what they want is to completely bury the, the drainage underground so that. Um, it is not going to come back in seven years or eight years or whatever, like it did last time.
No sense.
So.
And the only, the only other thing that may help them is this may be available for the American Rescue Plan. Same thing we were talking about with. But it doesn't specifically say drainage, but it does say in the plan that groundwater. Things may be available, but they don't, they're not very specific in the guidance, so maybe we ask our county friend to get the other answer.
Put that right next to it.
But let's get one answer first.
Okay, um. Any other comments or discussion?
Go ahead with it. So do I. Authorities, make a motion to authorize Renee to sign the.
Letter proposal. Anne made a motion, Judy seconded it. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
I opposed.
Motion carried.
Okay. Um, the only. The only other old news was um, our SAM funding, which is the uh, four hundred thousand dollars that um. Senator May's office um, has offered to us, but that we have to apply for. Um, I got a recent. uh has offered to us, but that we have to apply for. Um I got a recent email from the state, which is good news because it takes forever to get anything moving on these applications. Um and the first line says, as you know, the state has awarded a grant for the above referenced project. So um there are several documents that I need to fill out, some with Tom's help and probably some with Tim's help. And um um keep this moving down the pipeline because it is not something that's gonna happen tomorrow. But it would be great to get that money eventually and be able to put it towards the
Great all.
Great all, okay. I I never, if it's the great all in the payload and I'm always, I gotta go look at these pieces of equipment so I know what I'm talking about. So that's good news, uh because that means there's been some progress made. New business. So um I'm gonna give this to Nikki, unfortunately, I don't want to, but um both um our codes officer Bob Rodriguez and his clerk Leslie Rodriguez um have submitted their letters of resignation effective July thirty first um of this year. I can't tell you how sad I am that that's happening and not just because we're gonna lose a really good codes officer, but um just you have been, you both have been to take the office where it was when we entered office here um to where it is now, it's night and day. And everybody that's worked with you two has said that from from um, I told Larry Fitz today, the assessor is devastated.
Interesting run.
And the the planning and zoning board chairs, um it's, you you have really done a spectacular job. And so um you're a loss, you're a big loss. Um replacing you won't be easy, so. But um I think I speak for the board, um which I shouldn't, but we are committed to making sure we have an equally experienced and qualified codes officer to replace you so that they can continue to do the work that you've done. You've cleaned up that office in a way that when we came in here, we didn't think was possible. So um do we need to do anything other, do we need to accept?
I'll make a motion.
Just one second. Isn't there something about if you accept a resignation more than thirty days?
That's for public official.
Only for public official. Okay, I just wanted to be sure.
He's, he's keeping you on your toes, Tim.
He's an employee.
He's an employee.
Yeah, he's not a public officer.
Okay, I just wanted to be sure. I know that the sometimes those names get mixed up.
Supposed to be, you're not supposed to resign more than thirty days from the date of resignation if you're a public officer. But I think in this case it's okay. Um we'll we'll accept the resignation today.
Sadly. Accept it.
Or for the end of that month.
So for both positions, for both um the clerk and the.
I just wanted to be sure I didn't get kicked out today.
Okay, Judy seconded. Any other discussion? You're gonna be missed. Thank you.
Can we take you back, please? We don't want you to quit.
It's not, you don't.
It's always been a very.
No, and I'd say better, clout fight. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Opposed motion carried to accept the resignations. Um I'm gonna skip the sale of town land because I've not heard from the person that um I thought I was gonna report to you on. But you do have um the map of the the location, so I'll get back to you on that. Um the beautification of the town hall, the outside of this building needs help. So I'm, I would like to offer my help. I would be willing to head a committee, but I'd be looking for anyone who's interested, the public, the community to, if we, if we would like to do something to improve the ox need repair. There's the 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 Christmas tree had to be cut down because of the roots um
You said on top of something.
On the on the septic tank and it was starting to die out anyway, but pulling here one day and the tree was gone. I'm like, where's the tree? It's just gone. And I came in and Nikki said, well, they took it down. I said, why, I I didn't know anything about it. So but apparently that was something that was in the works before I started. So anyway, the tree is gone. It looks very bare out there. I think that that could be a community project where we don't need to spend a lot of money other than on the oxen repair to um try and improve the look. So I'm putting the word out to the public. I'm all for um anybody who wants to help. Um lots of people have perennials.
I have.
Lots of, lots of people um can can divide their perennials and and uh we can come up with some sort of it. Maybe we'll help, have somebody help us with the design, but we can do the work ourselves and maybe some of the the plants. So that's just, I'm throwing that out there, my idea. Sorry, I didn't share it with you guys. I just thought of it. When I, I've been here two days this weekend and both times they pulled in the driveway and I'm like.
Where's the tree?
It just looks bare. It's so bare.
The building, we have those windows that we have budgeted seven thousand three hundred.
We're not gonna spend all of that.
I know. I'm just thinking we should probably assign that to somebody to get moving on getting that work done.
Um.
It's sitting on my desk.
Yeah, we'll talk.
What were you gonna say, Carl?
John Kennedy's willing to uh fix the oxen if uh someone tells me there's money in the budget someplace, so give him another call. He almost, he wanted to do it last November.
Um, do we know what he's saying it's gonna cost?
No.
That's what I think we need to know that. You wanted, why don't you call him and ask? Okay.
Yeah, because as soon as we know what the windows are gonna cost us, that the balance of that seven thousand three hundred could be moved over to that.
Okay.
We can beautification out there. Steve did some mold along last week. We did around your sign out there, so.
Is my sign?
Well, I took your treaties though, for your sign.
Your sign.
Thanks for that.
Well, maybe that that digital sign is gonna be handy for the moment, but.
Because next winter it may be on the ground, so.
Great.
Were we doing some signs at the entrance to the town that we?
We did put that in the budget.
We put some of it in the budget.
Twenty five hundred in for entry.
Stimulus money.
How much was that for your town?
Thousand five hundred.
I was thinking some stimulus money could maybe go towards, because that would be hospitality, travel, tourism kinds of.
Maybe.
Maybe.
Maybe we should get some pricing just to see.
Yeah.
Contact our friends with the, your friend at the county and see if they agree.
Got quite a few things to contact her about now. Okay, um so just recently what came in, first of all, I I'm just gonna, I know, I Nikki, you maybe have not had anybody show up that's been interested in the the hard copies of the broadband survey.
No.
But um we do have them here at the town hall. Um I just got an email today that said that um I think the, we have until sometime in July, this, the broadband survey is online. Um I think it's on our website somewhere.
It's also right on the center of the on Go page.
Yes, yes. The county is using some of the stimulus money they are getting to do um in to improve broadband um in the areas that are lacking, uh and we are an area that is lacking. Um as of um, I forget when this is, but um oh, as of um June fourth, the the goal that they had set for themselves, they have reached twenty six percent of the goal. They have told that sometime in July before they're gonna close the survey. Um I reached out to a person who sent me this from the state or from the county and asked um, how's Pompey doing with that? Because we obviously have broadband issues here. We actually have had forty percent of our goal reached, so we're doing better than the county average with broadband. We're doing worse vaccinations um than uh because we are one of the towns that um has the lowest vaccination rate. Um but that said, um I'm just encouraging people to take that broadband survey. Um it will only benefit us in the long run. So I wanted to mention that again, um and we'll put some more information out on the website about it. Um I got a request from someone on Route ninety one in the area of the Pompey Club um asking for a speed reduction. Um I know the area, I mean, I know the strip of uh road there and um but uh and I do think that um it can be people's speed through that that section and it's not a great road right now. It's probably gonna be better once the, because I think, is that the area that they're working on?
That bad rates were there.
Okay, well, um I I said, and I think this is, I was.
Down, it's being worked out.
He, I I responded to this gentleman and said that before we made a request for a speed reduction, um it would be helpful for us if um there was a neighborhood petition because of what happened with citation driving the lights. I mean, we had one family that were, house that was interested in the lights, but when it came down to it, everyone else was opposed. So um I don't know how you feel about holding on that. I until, I I don't really want to move forward on a speed reduction request unless we know that the neighbors are are.
I think it means more when you send that into the county to do the study, it looks better to have a petition.
Petition.
All right, so are we gonna hold on this?
Yes.
Um and then um for all of you who are getting increased flights over your houses, um I've gotten, I've gotten someone complaining about that. And so I will, I know it's supposed to be temporary because they're doing work at Hancock Airport, but um I too am experiencing that in my house and the person who called me or emailed me is in a completely different area of the town, but it is having an impact. There's a lot more flights that are, the patterns that are, they're just, are you guys?
Yes.
Working on the runway right now, so we have the flight pattern change.
So the flight patterns all changed. I I responded to this person that I'll look into it, but I was under the impression it's temporary. So um with that said, that's all I have. Um I don't know if there's any public comment um either here or um online. Debbie, I don't know if you wanna say anything?
I missed, I would say my son's game. I missed the part about the solar, but I didn't hear what the decision.
We passed the the overlay district, yeah. Yeah, um you can hear it. Uh I mean, they'll post the the recording and it was right at the beginning, so did your son win?
Oh, well, he's like a assistant coach. He's.
Oh, oh, oh. Oh.
The coach asked him to help.
Gotcha. All right.
I was thirteen two when I left.
Oh, you were the same, is it, but it's the Bishop Logan game?
Yeah.
Oh, she was at that game too.
Uh I think the JV team divided into two.
Thomas, he's Jack's co-captain.
Oh, okay.
They play.
It was eighteen to two?
Thirteen to two when I left.
Oh, okay, I think it ended up fourteen to three.
Anything online?
Um, there is one comment. Um the audio and the video of the new AV system are great. It really improves the virtual experience. Thanks to the board for this much needed and timely improvement. Jim and Joanne Schoonmaker.
Watercolor. Oh, great. That's good to know.
It worked.
It worked. We weren't sure. Here's a couple on Facebook from James Loomis, number four road, very happy to hear this one program is a go for all levels. Thanks for all the work to make this happen. I still firmly believe that the amount of money this town pays in taxes that kids learning a lifesaving skill. Sorry, I have to put some more. Um learning a lifesaving skill of swimming should be enough of a priority to cover the fee for Pompey residents. Families with kids always get fees passed on to them every time money gets tight. That is sad, in my opinion. Still grateful there is a program. Um Nancy Furdock from um Sevier Road, regarding the speed reduction on Route ninety one, are there any statistics available on accidents or injuries that would suggest the current speed limit is inappropriate? The only thing I can say to that, Nancy, is that um I can get, um I can make a request from the nine one one center in Anadaga County for accident reports in that area. Um it's, uh so we don't know that and that's why sometimes we don't wanna act on a speed reduction request until we have a little bit better um understanding.
And I think that's one of the things the state looks at when they do a study.
Yeah.
So if, yeah, if we made the request, they would probably look at it. Um, one more question on Zoom. Where uh sorry, where on the town of Pompey website can I find the broadband survey? I don't believe it's up there.
Oh, it's not on there?
No, I think there was a Facebook post, but I don't think the content ever made it to the site. I stand corrected. I thought it was on our website. It's on our Facebook page.
I posted it on Facebook, but I don't know how to post on the website, so.
So we will get it on the website and we'll put it right on the homepage. Um.
Can you guys send me a link again?
Yes.
Whatever you wanna say.
Yeah, who's, who sent, whose question was that?
Uh, sorry, it's hard for me to read that. Richard Moses.
Oh, okay. Oh, Mosson?
Yeah, it's M O S E S.
Something.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Moses.
Moses.
Yeah, Moses. Yeah. If we put it up there, Richard, please take the survey. It was just better for us. So um we need to go into executive session. Um so I would.
Make a motion, we go into executive session.
I'll second it.
And it would need to discuss matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal or removal of a particular person or person. So um we are going to adjourn to Larry's office. And I don't know if we need you, Tom, so.
We'll stay in till later.
Yeah. How are you?
I don't wanna cause trouble.
Veronica.
That is thirty days. Can't be more than thirty days.